Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. The Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors, December the 17th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Layland?
Here.
Swart?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Liddel?
Here. Would you please join us in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving on to agenda received as proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries? Okay, we have Don Bosco, but I don't see him here yet. So we'll kind of skip that until they'll come, and then we'll go back to it. Okay, they're not out in the hallway?
No.
Okay, we'll come back to it. Okay, item three is public comments. Anybody like to speak to the board at this time? It's not an agenda item. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to claims and payments. Resolution A, James?
Payments came out to $447,453.67. The big notable ones, $49,000 for the engineer's office, $134,000 for the sheriff's, $94,000 for IT, and $24,000 for health department. Everything looked good.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Swart?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Liddel?
Yes. Item five is presentation for fiscal year 19 county audit presented by Clifton Larson Allen. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Miranda Wentland with Clifton Larson Allen. I'm here to present the results of the 2019 audit. In front of you this morning, you have three individual items here. The largest item here is the audited financial statements. There's a letter to governance that includes our required audit communications. And the third item here is the bound copy of the presentation that we'll go through this morning. We'll start with going over the key items in the governance communication letter. We'll review the financial items from 2019. And then we'll take a look at the financial statement, federal award, and Iowa state compliance findings. As auditors, it is our responsibility to present or to give an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. We do that based on a risk-based audit approach. We certainly do not review every financial transaction the county enters into during the fiscal year. We look at accounts that have significant balances or a significant amount of activity running through those accounts. We perform interviews with county management and other personnel, as well as one of the board members. We review the board minutes, looking for significant transactions and verifying that they are included in the financial statements. We also do a year-over-year trend analysis. And if anything jumps out at us, we would do a further review there if there was something that we didn't expect based on those inquiries and initial procedures. We verify a significant portion of the balance sheet through third-party confirmation. And we do a review or gaining an understanding of the county's internal controls. We do not provide an opinion on the effectiveness of those controls, though. We were out onsite for fieldwork the second week of September. During that time, we did a lot of the legal compliance testing, internal control evaluations, and we got a start on the federal testing. We came back out the week of October 14th, and that's when we did a lot of the substantive procedures auditing the financial statements. We want to remind you that management is responsible for the accounting policies. The accounting policies and procedures are highlighted in Note 1 to the financial statements. There were no changes in accounting standards this year. So what that means for you is that when you review the financial statements, you'll see the presentation overall is very consistent with the prior year presentation with the addition of one additional footnote this year related to the sale of the Country View Care Facility. Management has taken responsibility of the financial statements and has provided us with a signed representation letter indicating their review and approval. There were no delays in performing the audit. Everything was provided timely and in good order. No issues were discussed prior to our retention as independent auditors. There were no disagreements with management regarding accounting, reporting, or other auditing matters. And we had no consult-- we are not aware of any consultations with other independent accountants. During the audit, if we were to come across anything that we felt was not materially correct, we would propose adjustments to management. Management reviews those adjustments, and those are reflected in the financial statements. We only had one correctedness statement this year, and that related to the June local option sales tax payment totaling $237,000. So that increased the financial position of the county as of June 30th. We had two passed adjustments. What that means is that the adjustments were not material to the county's financial statements. Management reviewed our proposed adjustments and passed on those. And we were in agreement that they did not need to be recorded this year. One related to inventory balances and the other the self-insurance receivable as of June 30th. Moving on to the financial statement highlights. Within the financial statements, there are five components. The introduction includes our independent auditor's report, as well as management's discussion and analysis. And that's a good place to go to to get a quick summary of what happened during the year. There is an explanation of some of the increases or decreases over prior year. Basic financial statements include the year-end financial statements, as well as the notes to the financial statements, which provides more information about the information within the financial statements. Required supplementary and other information includes your budgetary schedules, some of the combining schedules, and additional notes on your net pension liability and your total OPEB liability. Your statistical section reports the last-- over the last 10 years, some of the operating statistics for the county, some debts, debt ratios, as well as some of the financial results for 10 years, or 10-year period. And finally, is the single audit section that relates to the federal spending, your schedule of federal awards, the independent auditor's report, and then the schedule of any findings or question costs. All right, so, big picture, looking at your general fund, which is your primary operating fund. Revenue was very consistent between 2018 and 2019, coming in at $41.2 million. Expenditures were at $38 million. And other financing sources and uses, about $1.3 million. Overall, there was a positive net change in your fund balance of $4.4 million. And that's primarily a result of the closing of the Country View Care Facility. There was a $3.3 million transfer from care facility into the general fund. You started the year with $18.6 million in fund balance and ended the year with $23 million. Your mental health fund, expenditures exceeded revenue by about $195,000, bringing your overall fund balance as of June 30, 19 to $154,000. Rural services fund, overall net change about $69,000, which is not significant to that fund, ending fund balance $1,535,000. Secondary roads, expenditures before transfers exceeded revenue by $3.4 million. There are transfers from the general fund and your rural service fund for $3.2 million, resulting in a net change of a deficit $224,000, bringing your fund balance from $4.6 million to $4.4. Debt service fund, expenditures exceeded revenue by $1.3 million, bringing your fund balance to $243,000. That fund balance is restricted for future principal and interest payments. Our capital project fund, there's about $1 million in capital spending during the year. There was a transfer from the general fund of $1.3 million, resulting in a positive change in fund balance of $189,000. Your ending fund balance is about $2.3 million. $1.3 million of that is restricted for capital. That's a result of your unspent bond proceeds. The other $1.3 million is other county funds that have been placed into the county capital project funds with the intent to be spent on capital. Your other non-major funds are aggregated and reported as one. The overall net change is $292,000, bringing your ending fund balance to $1,964,000, of which $1.8 million is restricted for the purpose of the funds. So overall, looking at the governmental funds as a whole, $33 million is where you started the year, ended the year at $36 million, with about a $3.2 million increase in your governmental activity. We look at a breakdown of some of those non-major governmental funds. Overall, there wasn't a significant change in any of the fund balances. The largest component of your non-major funds is the Friends of Hartman Reserve, coming in with a fund balance of $954,000. Next, we'll look at your enterprise funds. The largest being the Country View Care Facility. As you approved the sale in January of 2019, the Country View Care Facility Fund has been closed. Started the year with $1.8 million as a deficit net position. After the sale, $3 million was transferred to the general fund to close the fund. Your non-major enterprise funds include your rural water and sewer. Overall, expenditures exceeded revenue by $124,000. That's primarily a result of depreciation expense. Overall, there was about $64,000 in cash provided by operating. Your depreciation expense is the recognition of the use-- using the capital assets. So that's amortized on an annual basis and does not represent a cash outflow. What that tells us, though, is that the rates being charged are not sufficient to cover the use of the asset. Ending fund balance, $1,760,000. An overall change in cash was a negative $25,000 in your enterprise funds, primarily due to the sale or due to the payment of the last-- the last issue on the debt was paid off in 2019 for about $95,000. All right. So the capital asset summary for the county, as of the end of the year, the amount invested in infrastructure is about $108,000. That's up about $4 million from last year. There's a significant amount of work in progress as of the end of the year, about $5.4 million. That's related to infrastructure and secondary roads. Business type activities is depreciating. There were no additional assets added this year. Your net capital assets for business type is about $1.5 million. Long-term obligations of the county consist of your general obligation bonds, the net pension liability, your total OPEB or other post-employment benefit liability, and then compensated absences, which represent the vested sick and vacation. Total's about $43 million. As you can see in the schedule here, the debt is expected to be paid back over the next seven years with your largest payments due in 2020, coming in at $5.6 million. So converting from your governmental funds, that's more on an operating basis. That does not include your long-term assets, your long-term liabilities, reporting $32-- or $36.3 million. We add back in some of the capital assets, long-term, all the other obligations of the county to come up with the ending net position for the government as a whole at about $109 million. That net pension liability will decrease in the future years because the way it's measured is it's measured as of June 30 of 2018, which includes a full year of Country View employee contributions. Next year, they'll report a half a year, and then the following year is completely removed from the employer allocation. So we'll see that liability decrease over the next two years. A measure of performance or financial health for governmental entity is the number of months of expenditures that are available in fund balance. We took a look at this for the-- for all funds, but we look at this primarily for your operating funds, where the expenditures are consistent throughout the year as opposed to debt service or capital where they may be one-time purchases. Your general fund is at seven-- about seven months of expenditures is sitting in fund balance. The-- we typically look for three to five months based on GFOA's recommendation of a healthy fund balance. So the county is well above that benchmark. So very healthy general fund. Mental health is at about two months, pretty consistent with last year. Rural services is eight months, and secondary roads is about 6.2 months. So your funds are very healthy. All right, so within the report, you will see that we had three recommendations related to the financial statement process. The first one, as I referenced earlier, is material audit adjustment and an adjustment for $237,000 related to the June local option sales tax. We would recommend that the county tighten the controls around year-end reporting to avoid any kind of adjustments. 2019-002 is related to limited segregation of duties. This is specific to IT user access. The county formally-- does not have a formal process to review user access for employees, and we'd recommend that at least on an annual basis and as changes in employment occur, that that be reviewed to make sure that the controls in the system are adequate. And the last one here relates to cash reconciliations. The county has a significant cash balance, and that's spread across several banks within the county. So the reconciliation can get quite complicated. We're just looking-- the reconciliation is being done on a monthly basis. We're just looking for that to be compiled, and then someone to document their review and approval of that reconciliation.
Miranda, so you don't see an issue that we have it spread across multiple aid organizations or banks, I guess?
Very typical.
Just having-- okay.
Yep, with the many components, though, the reconciliation can get complicated. So having that one person doing that monthly review and then documenting that the review has been performed would be an additional control over that amount of cash. All right. In 2019, the county expended $1,325,000 in federal awards. That's spread across several programs. We tested three of those programs, hospital preparedness and public health emergency preparedness, the HIV care formula grant, and the disaster grant. That's approximately 45% of the total federal awards. We did not have any recommendations for internal controls or compliance over those programs. They're very well operated. Iowa state compliance, we completed the Iowa County Compliance Guide and reviewed all areas as indicated here. And we had no findings or recommendations as a result of our review. It's a pleasure working with the county. We appreciate all the work that everyone did to pull the numbers together, have the audit schedules available for us as we needed it, respond to all of our inquiries, and then review the final financial statements. Are there any questions from the board?
I guess just one, you mentioned the material weakness of the local option sales tax.
Yes.
And are there recommendations that you have for us or what we could do to strengthen that or to avoid that after again?
So with any audit schedule, our recommendation would be whoever prepares the schedule should submit that to someone independent of the preparation. And then that review should occur just to double-check to make sure that--
Another set of--
the receivable schedule is complete or the payable schedule, whatever schedule they're reviewing, is complete and accurate. And then also doing a comparison to the prior year. So if you were to see that the receivable balance decreased significantly, take a look at, does that make sense for the county as a whole? That that receivable would have increased might help catch errors like that.
Okay, thank you.
James, you got anything you want to add?
This really couldn't have happened without the staff here. And, you know, more importantly, Billy. Billy is a huge help to this, and it was very pivotal. So awesome job by everybody. And I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that Billy had a huge part in this.
Okay, Bart, anything else? Okay, we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Moving on to item six, receiving project updates from departments and our elected officials. Morning Cathy, you had a look today.
Good morning, Board. I'm gonna give this presentation another try this week. I wanted to update you on the work that is going on out on Cedar Wapsie Road to replace the structure over the Cedar River on the road there. So PCI is working now. They've had a crew there almost consistently now for several weeks. They are working in a time period where we're not charging them working days. This is allowed by-- this is very common for winter work by DOT specifications. So between November and March of this year, in the winter, we are not charging them working days because, as you can imagine, many days in the winter are questionable for getting any type of work done. Just depends on the weather each year. So I've got about five or six slides here that show the construction, the conditions that have been out there in the past, well, since we signed the contract with PCI in early spring. So you can see that in March 2019, the water was up a bit. And then by August, it had gone back down again. You can see that PCI is working on the causeway here. They were bringing material out into the river so that they can access the site for pier construction. This is the bridge that was here prior to the existing bridge. So we've-- they've just been in different locations throughout the river. This new structure that we are building will be the third structure, as far as we know, the third modern structure across the river there. Part of the contract will be to remove these old foundations. The river was back up again due to rain in September. By the end of September, the water level was down again. You can see that a portion of the causeway got removed from the high water just a few weeks earlier. And then by mid-November, it's been fairly low. It did come up two weeks ago, but it-- but not as high as it was in the fall. So they are continuing to make some progress. This is a few weeks ago. They hauled in materials, sand material primarily, to start construction of the first pier. So this would be the-- there are five piers in the river for the new bridge, and then there are two abutment piers. One of the first orders of work to start the pier construction is you need to build this frame, at which point sheet pile is driven around that frame and then welded to that frame. And if you look very closely, there's really two frames to this-- to the square. There's a top square that stays in place, and then a lower square that will, as they excavate out this cofferdam, it will drop. And this allows structural integrity of the cofferdam during the construction. So here you can see the sheet pile is being driven. This is a good shot of the actual sheet pile being installed. And it's just vibrated into essentially the sand. And it goes all the way around the square. And I just wanted to show you a close-up of how the sheet pile works. So there's interlocking pieces right here. You can see that they just slide together, and it allows a fairly proof, a fairly waterproof tight enclosure, but there's still some pumping that has to take place. We've seen the past week that water is coming up from underneath the cofferdam into the cofferdam. So they do have several pumps running this week. And I was gonna show you a short video here. So this week, as of yesterday, PCI had driven 22-- there's 22 piles in each foundation, each pier. They had completed all 22 piles for the first pier. We're anticipating that tomorrow they will bring in-- they're starting to bring in the formwork and the steel so that they can pour the footing. And then the column will come up from that. And then there will be four more of those piers. And I'll keep you updated. So if you're interested in seeing any of that construction this winter, you're probably-- if the weather's not too bad, they're continuing to make good progress. They've used approximately 50% of the working days, and we've paid approximately 9% of the contract total so far. We do have this information on Twitter, and then we also have a Facebook account. We're trying to keep that updated with construction progress photos and videos. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Is there anybody else? Okay, then, moving on to item seven, the minutes approved for December 10, 2019.
Second.
Any questions on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item made is consent agenda being made with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on the consent? Roll call, please.
Swart?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Yes.
Liddel?
Yes. Item nine is other business. This is a motion of appointment of Dottie Weir to the Black Hawk County Board of Adjustments. Be approved effective December 17, 2019, with a term ending November 1, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on this one? And I still think we're short two.
Yeah, we can--
At least we have a quorum now, so we can-- Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B is a motion that the appointment of Reverend Mary Robinson to the Black Hawk County Board of Health be approved effective January 1, 2020, with a term ending December 31, 2022.
So moved.
Is there any questions or comments on this appointment?
No, I guess just adding that's a reappointment. This is her second reappointment. Yeah.
But she's been on there before.
Yeah, she's served it, and she filled another term or something. Yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C is a discussion possible board action, the amendment to the contract between Black Hawk County and Ben Delagardell Doing Businesses Urban Services, LLC, for the Washburn Sanitary Sewer Operator Fees to include an increase in the basic service rate to $1,555 per month at a 4% rate increase every even year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I sent the information we got from Ben. Craig and myself met with him a couple weeks ago. Back in 2009, the board created a three-person board out there, and they haven't really been too active. Dane has been in the process of contacting them to see if-- first off, if they're still want to serve. I think we ought to increase that board to five. And after all, all these increases are not paid by the taxpayers. They're paid by the usage fees of the residents out there. And I think by having that buffer, obviously, they can't make the decision. The recommendation's always got to come to the board that they can meet with Ben periodically and, in this case, right here, and then bring the recommendation to the board. So I'm not sure. We'll have to figure out a way to get the word out there. But I think it'd be a three-person, a five-board, I think would be a lot better. And I don't know if the board's interested in doing that today, approving that. And we'll try to figure out. We can put a mailer out in their water bill, but that won't be till the-- in their water bill, but that won't be till the February. And there'll probably be a small cost involved with that, so.
I think it's good.
But I think it's important to have that board in place out there because, you know, they need to be making some of the decisions too.
I think that was an issue at one time. I think we maybe discussed that and it was just difficult to get people even to reappoint, so they.
I did make contact with one of them and it was Don Ames and he still wants to serve on there and he was going to check with the other two to see if they were interested. And I told him we'd like to increase it to a five-person board. So we'll approve that today. Getting back to the request, back in '07, there was an increase on the hourly rate and I believe the hourly rate went to, was it 2520? Ben, or did it go to 3025?
The original contract from the year 2000 was 2520, be the first guy and second guy. We, at that point, changed from 2520 to 3530.
Okay, so it's currently happening now.
Yeah, it's unchanged from 2007.
And then in 2009, their request for the monthly contract from nine-something went up to the 1045.
Right, and that was a change because of how we were operating before was, I was actually an employee. I was being paid as an independent contractor. I was not insured. He was not removing or taking with income withholdings, everything like that. I wasn't insured under his business, so protect himself, he started paying for the workers' compensation during the withholdings, made me an employee. So that addition from 988 to 1045 was to pay for the workers' compensation rate that was being paid at that time.
Now, this increase here, we go up to $1,555. That's, actually, that's about a forty-eight percent increase on the monthly. It doesn't show the rate, but he's also requesting a rate from 3530 to 40 for the contractor and 35 for the assistant. And then this four percent, basically, it rolls out two percent every year. I've got some concerns on that one there. Initially, we got a pretty good size increase on the monthly. But I think we'll have to do a little research with James because since I've been on the board, there's been two increases on usage adjustments. And as anything else, they've never been too favorable with the people out there. And we've held it for a time, but, you know, we may be getting close here that the board may have to go back out there and again, like I said, we've heard about it a couple of times. Hopefully, we'll have a board in place too, so.
Okay, I make a few comments?
Yeah.
The breakdown of where I'm at with the cost increase does not keep up with the inflation rate from where we started in 2000. I've got it broken down to include the costs for the monthly fee. I basically am on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I provide emergency response services, whether it's me or one of my employees. I maintain a cell phone line open to call at any time during the day, or obviously 24 hours, seven days a week. We store the service trailer that we use for operations, which in the beginning of this, operations was, we're just going to throw it into a shop and it's going to sit there till we need it. Over time, we've learned that during the winter, we have water drugs that we keep in there. They freeze outside, so we're keeping this indoors now. Heated during the winter, during the summer, it's not a big deal. But the pumps that we install, when they're cold and we put them in, sometimes they have a hard time starting up because of the rubber is frozen to the metal and it just does not start up. So if we end up taking more time to put a new pump in that's warm. So during the winter months, we've kind of incurred more storage costs because of the heated requirements. The on-call, I basically figured this off of one hour per day, just over one hour per day, plus the cell phone storage and on-call time, so.
The information that he was talking about is covered in the original contract and it is the contractor's responsibility. There's also a fee paid for the Iowa, what do they call that, first call? I believe you get, what, $35?
Well, that's the, that's, are you talking about the locates?
Locates.
Yeah, I charge you for that. Normally, it's not a full hour. Some of it's.
Well, the contract calls for a minimum of an hour, so if you're there five minutes, you get paid the full amount.
Yeah, and I don't.
That's why I question that all the time because I bet you in a year, we probably had over a hundred of those. But again, that, it is what it is. If they call it in, you have to do it. The, what else?
So, well, just meant, he said, you said you don't, so you mean you're.
Well, if it doesn't take me more than a half hour, I charge you a half hour.
Okay.
Like, if I drive there, I take my equipment. If it, if it doesn't need to be done, I just charge you a half hour for the time it took me to do it.
Okay.
But if I'm getting out and I'm in a wet ditch, putting paint markers down, putting stakes down, and it takes me longer than a half hour, I do charge an hour.
Do the hour. Okay, thank you.
I wish we had our five-person board in place, to be honest with you, because this is, some of these are pretty substantial increases, whether they're justified or not justified. And again, it affects their usage fees out there. And, but the board can, I can see a way we can approve different portions of this. Or you can lump it all together and approve all his requests. Or you can delay it until we see how healthy the county is and see possibly we can get a board together. So it's really up to the board on what you want to do on this.
I was kind of curious and Ben, maybe you can, you talked about the four percent increase every other year rather than just two percent.
Yeah, well, originally, the contract had no increases. We know that buying power is reduced over time. Costs increase all the time for me. And I can't see going forward without building in some kind of an increase. It's automatic. I don't, I don't mind reviewing that in five, six years, but a two percent increase per year. Fairly reasonable.
Yeah.
And doing this every other year. My concession was that since we're doing it every other year, you don't have to review every year. Okay, is the budget keeping up with our costs? Is the budget keeping up with our costs? So in two years, we can reconsider, or you as a board can reconsider the rates that you need. That was kind of something I, I don't need two percent per year, but I wouldn't mind averaging that over the next six, 10 years, depending.
That's what I just wondered.
Correct. That's, that was, yeah, that was the idea, was that.
And you proposed it for 10 years too.
Yeah, 10 years, I, it's a very long time.
Yeah, that's what I.
But we've gone this long without an increase. I think we've got a, it does seem like a lot, but we've got to keep up with costs and.
Well, our contracts before haven't been 10-year contracts.
Oh, no.
No, this one, this one would still renew every year and by December 21st, I think we could write a letter and and notify of cancellation in March per the contract. But it renews by itself and that would continue.
So rather than doing it incrementally every year, you just thought.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to have to come back in.
Come back every year.
Two or four years to say, I'm not keeping up with my, you know. If I hire somebody to come, come help me, it's not going to be for $15, $20 an hour because of the work that we do is dirty. They basically have to sanitize themselves before they leave, their vehicles, clothes, stuff like that. It can get pretty dirty and.
You have just yourself and one other employee?
Yeah, well, I have more than one employee. Yeah, I do have three or four people to help me and then a secretary that prepares all my administrative stuff for me and prepares the bill and then I look it over. But there's a lot of backdrop costs that don't get seen.
Contract calls for the contractor and assistant is what's specified out.
Yeah.
And that's what I saw.
Yep.
Now, the contract is 1999, I believe, vintage 2000.
Yeah, it was, I believe it was formed in 1999 and started 2000, March 2000.
And the board, and the board does have a fourth option if they want to seek proposals too. We looked at that back in, I think it was 2009. We were going to possibly do that and I am not really sure what happened there.
I was going to say, I wondered because I did see.
Well, I can't remember. We were, we were getting close to that along with looking at different types of grinder pumps that would save some cost out there. So the board has the option to research that to see if there's any interest out there. So there's a lot of options there. We don't necessarily have to take action today. It's up to the board on what action they want to take.
Who's the other two board members out there, Ben?
Ray here is one. Don Ames is the other.
Yeah, I do know Don Ames on a first-name basis.
He was going to.
The other ones I don't know. It's been quite a while.
Other guy tall, that tall, thin guy?
I don't know. He was going to check with Ray and then also with the third one. I'll probably give him a call back.
So did they meet with you or do they?
No.
The last meeting I went to, Craig was there. That was when we had the, the stormwater was, was in town and we were.
That was years ago.
But that was really for.
People were confusing the sewer water with the stormwater and we were there to clear up any inconsistencies in knowledge and rumors. So it was fairly positive. I think there was a lot of.
Yeah, at the end.
Board, or Pete, the, first off, I brought up the, going to a five-person board. Would you prefer that goes on the agenda next week as a separate item?
It should be, yes. That would be a good idea because it's not clear that that is what you're thinking about.
Okay, so, well, if that's all right with the board, we'll have an agenda item next week for that one. What's the board's pleasure today on these requests?
To move forward with how it's written.
Yeah, I'm comfortable moving forward. We just saw in the audit how we're not keeping up with what it's going to cost.
My concern, I was locking it in for the 10 years. I think the four percent for the two years and then it should be reviewed at that time and hopefully we'll have a board in place that the recommendations can go through that board also. So I would rather see the monthly go for two years from January 1st and then it's back up to the board for review and hopefully go through a board out there first.
Yeah, I would obviously meet with them openly, no problem.
Because we very well may have to raise rates right now if you approve what you're approving today.
Well, we've talked about that previously, that.
Yeah, and I have no idea. That account's been pretty healthy, but.
I will say that over the, my time working for my dad and being the manager, the costs have been our number one concern along with the longevity of the system. Obviously, we have a long list of responsibilities here and one of those would be the proper operation of the facilities and avoiding catastrophic things that can happen. So we proposed the, the cheaper way of rebuilding these pumps maybe a year ago. I don't remember. That's just kind of a show of how we do everything we can to control costs in Washburn. It's a unique system, not a lot of systems like this that are completely grinder pump dependent or a sewer system like this.
But the board's going to have to keep in mind too, whether it's this board that'll deal with it or a future board, but that facility is approximately 20-some years old and they indicated in the past that there's going to be, need some improvements and, you know, they're not going to be cheap. So, and that'll again, come out of their usage fees, so. The bottom line is, you know, I want to, we have to make a decision up here, but I want input from the citizens out there in Washburn because they're the ones that are paying the bill. So you had a motion, Dan. Could we specifically say what the motion is? I mean, the particulars?
In regard to the.
Okay, first, well, I'll bring it up. First one is a request to go to $40 for the contractor and 35 for the assistant. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay, and then the contract to go from, I think it's 1045 to 1555?
Yes.
Okay, with a, for two years?
Yes.
For review then, so. And then the, what else was there? There's another one there. Was it hourly rate, monthly? Was that it, Ben?
The only other changes was I was going to change, I was going to change my home business address is changed.
Now, that, that's.
No, no, no other financial changes.
We've got that updated on the contract. The contract's really kind of quite long and we may want to review that contract. Maybe again, if we can get a board together, they can review it and condense it a little bit because there's a lot of things that the contractors has to provide and there's a lot that the county has to provide, so. Okay, is everybody clear then what we're voting? Did I get a second?
Yep, that was me.
Okay, are we clear then, everybody? Grant, you get everything you need?
Is it everything that was written on the agenda, which would include the four percent rate increase?
Other than there's two years on the month. So after two years, it'll be reviewed again. The monthly rate. Okay.
And next week, we'll vote on the five.
And then we'll bring back next week for the five and hopefully we can check to see what a mailer would cost. And hopefully, maybe we got our recent people on there.
Mm-hmm.
Help them get started and maybe they can meet, they should meet once a month, really. Especially, there's going to be some changes coming up.
Yeah, at the beginning, they should at least, we meet once a month and then down the road, it could probably go quarterly or whatever.
Okay, is everybody clear what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's have a, let's do a roll call on this one, Grant.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Okay, thank you all for that. Any reports or information from the board at this time?
Yes, I want to, there's a house for sale at 1417 West Fourth Street. Church Road Neighborhood Association bought this house. And with the help of Black Hawk County Veteran Affairs and a lot of veteran labor, a lot of donations, a lot of contributions, they've renovated this house. It's actually not far from my house and Grant's house, near Six Corners, and they're trying to sell it now so that they can buy another house. I walked through it yesterday. It's, it's a great house. It's.
Nice house.
Very nice.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see a veteran end up in it, but anybody can purchase it and there's significant financial incentives. So whoever did buy it could probably get into it without a down payment. So I encourage people to look at it, consider it.
Orlando, did you know where this is at or what he's talking about on this one? Yeah, it's, it's a nice house. It's a large house.
I thought you guys already, I've got a second one, just back down the street from it.
I know that Tim Combs is doing something else.
Oh, okay, that's, that's a, by.
That won't last long.
So this has changed. Initially, it was for a veteran though, or a family, so that has changed.
So veterans got preference.
That was initially what they.
You know, each month goes by, they're losing.
Yeah, they want to fill it.
Yeah, so just to get.
It'll be in their orbit. I, I can't see where that's going to sit vacant very long. It's a nice looking home. Okay, anything else, Dan?
Nope.
Linda?
Um, yes, I, something I, we should have done last week. I was thinking about, I was going to say, it's a congratulations to the county engineering department. Kathy and her crew received two awards from, I guess asphalt, and correct me if I'm wrong, the Asphalt Paving Association of Iowa. And the one award was for the Engineering Department of the Year 2019 and the other was for a smoothness award for the Cedar Wapsie Road.
I think, was that in the paper? I read that somewhere, so.
Maybe Twitter? She let, yeah. She let us know.
Yeah.
But congratulations, I think, for you and, yeah, that's.
It's probably on Facebook. I get all my news off from Facebook.
Uh-oh, that's dangerous.
Again, I don't know why, James, you can check for us. Adam Bosco wasn't here. I don't know if they didn't get notified right or what, so we'll have to reschedule that one maybe next week.
Can I follow up with that?
Chris, anything?
Yeah, for the last nine months, I've been working with a coalition of folks in different organizations. Dan's been involved in this too, to establish an emergency warming center that will serve this area. Of folks that, people can go that get turned down by, by other existing shelters, either they got whatever issue that they're not eligible to be there. But we feel that regardless of someone's position in life, nobody should be out freezing to death in our community. And so the center will be opening on the 6th of January in partnership with, with the Freedom Center at Jubilee, Jubilee United Methodist Church at East Fourth and Newell Street. It's going to take a lot of volunteers. We're doing 12-hour shifts. That's going to be, that you got to do a shift from usually 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Taking two volunteers each night. I know I'll be doing a number of nights there. But also, as we go through this year, we know that in order to be sustainable, we've just got to look at. just gotta look at getting some kind of partnership involving all the cities in the community and the county to come up with a, a permanent location and, and some support for some staff, so I encourage you to kind of follow how this develops this year and how we run this facility and, and just keep in mind, like, we won't really have a good sense of what the need is until, until it opens and so, but we're excited, you know, there's a lot of frustrating moments over the last number of nine months, but it's all finally coming to and, and excited to be able to serve these folks.
So you mentioned the staffing though and shifts, but is the location the church?
Yeah, the, the location is, is the resource center in the, in the church, yeah, for, for, for this year.
Okay, oh, okay, subject to change.
Very good, anything else? Great? Okay, we do have a ten o'clock board, we do have a ten o'clock.